I'd like to welcome in tonight the Board of Directors' regular meeting for the July. And if you will join me in the pledge, I appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to ask you to keep Mary Sinkus, our director, in your thoughts and prayers as she moves ahead after the passing of her husband two weeks ago. And tonight's proxy will be Jerry. Celebrating success.
All right, well, this is part of the board meeting that we love to share with everybody. These are acts of kindness or things that our employees have done to go above and beyond. We would like to recognize them for those accomplishments. First, we have Eric Bloom. If he would stay in and come up with his manager mic. Thanks for coming, Eric. Eric consistently is available to help in all crisis situations, especially after hours and on weekends. He is good about returning calls and texts and helps whenever we need him. While working nights and weekends are part of his job responsibilities, he never seems bothered when he gets a call from me in the middle of the night or on a holiday. Me is Joan Buzinski, by the way, not me. On July 6th, we had a challenge at the marina and he was quick to help me think of options for a solution. On July 4th, he was contacted by our Blowing Springs staff member about a large tree that fell in the road. Though it was not his area of responsibility, he came out on a holiday and cut up the tree and moved it out of the way. Eric has a demanding job and has been very helpful when after-hours problems arise. He is very deserving of the celebrating success award. Let's congratulate Eric. Next, we have Bob Walker and Lee Cranky. Hope I'm pronouncing your last name correctly. I come up with his manager Rick and Mike as well. There's Bob's. And here's Lee's. So these two gentlemen are both Langford Rangers. You may have seen them out there out and about contacting our members, doing a fantastic job. This is nominated by Rick Echols. Bob came to me earlier this spring and indicated that we needed a policy to cover intoxicated boaters as laws have recently changed. With my approval, Rick, he set up a meeting with the Rangers and Officer Trammell at the Bell Vista Police Department. From this policy, from this, policy was adopted and immediately put into use when on June 19th Ranger Cranky aided the police department in removing an intoxicated boat from Hock Room. Witnesses reported that if action wasn't taken, there would have been a high likelihood of loss of property and/or serious injury. So these two gentlemen, we appreciate you taking a step forward and helping us get this policy put in place and a quick outcome. We appreciate it. Thank you very much. Next, we have Trey Anson, and he was nominated by Joan Buzinski. Could you come forward, please? He was nominated also by a fellow staff member, so I want to make that point too. Trey consistently goes beyond expectation in serving members. Personally assists members when issues arise, even when there is no direct financial benefit. Trey takes a great deal of ownership in his job and the resources entrusted to him. One of several examples was to help a stranded boater and then following up with trying to help him with his boat battery the next day. Joan related a story this afternoon or this morning also about Trey of him tracking down a large floatable device that was floating across the lockbomber and almost killed himself trying to correct it. Good job, Trey. Congratulations. Congratulations. Last but not least, we have Chris Baker, who is nominated by Darryl Muldoon. So Chris is a returning employee of the POA. At our request, Darryl's request, she came back to golf operations to help fill the spot of a golf operations supervisor for a couple of months until this position could be filled. You were enjoying retirement, though, right? Chris filled this critical position as such a man that we were able to meet our tournament obligations and leave obligations to the high standards that we expect from our golf operations. Chris's positive attitude reflected well in her team. Although Chris was not fully trained in this leadership role, she used all resources available to learn quickly and to become proficient at her temporary role as a supervisor. Chris's ego did not prevent her from using all team members in our group to get help when she was not sure of the right direction to go. We all feel that Chris made a positive impact on our organization. We appreciate her coming back. And Darryl just told me that she's retired, semi-retiring, so let's congratulate Chris. Thank you for your presentation.
We congratulate all the successful persons. Okay, moving on to approval minutes. I'd ask that we have a motion to accept the minutes for the June 22nd or 27th Board of Directors' regular meeting. A second, please. Any discussion, any corrections or additions? If not, can I call for a vote, all those accepting? The second item is July 18th board work session. Can I have a motion to accept those?
So will.
A second, please. Derek, any additions or subtractions on that? If not, can I call for a vote on those? Moving on to joint advisories, the Lakes Committee.
I did. The minutes for the Lakes Committee are very detailed, so I encourage everybody to go through those. Did want to point out that the next meeting in August, they are going to discuss potential wake boat regulations. So we encourage everybody to attend, to share their opinions regarding those possible regulations. And we're going to try and make those regulations or possible regulations public several weeks prior to the meeting so people can read them, digest them, provide us with their input.
Recreation. Hi, Derek.
Hello. This is Eric Griffin, Chair of the Recreation Committee, over our last month's minutes. And I'll make this quick because I have four grandkids waiting to meet in. It's being held. So anyway, we had four guests, all avid pickleballers, and they told us the tales of woe and the things that they'd like to see done. And so we've taken that into consideration. It was on our agenda last year, and it's here probably again. We also have a new committee member, and her name is Jackie Gaines. She has come to us as we had Bill Puskas retire from the committee. So we welcome her. She gets to sit at the main table. Let's see. Pickleball course we talked about, and court expansion was the top of Joan's list, so it's got a lot of exposure and there's a lot of people that really, there's a lot of the folks that we have courts for. The Fireflies event gave away like 560 hot dogs, extremely successful. A gun range, we had more usage due to better weather. As far as Tanger Creek goes, a lot of volunteers doing a great job of keeping, of upkeeping that, and will continue to do so with support from us as well. We had our committee elections. I retain my chair, and Chris Stockman is now going to be our vice chair, and we are desperately looking for a secretary. So it's on a rotational basis right now, so they're not this good next month. Please bear with us as it might be me. And let's see, the next meet and greet is scheduled for August 10th. We get a good turnout to that, and so if you know anybody who has just moved into the area, we actually met new neighbors yesterday that are just building a house next door to us, so see if we can get them there as well. Budget priorities, we'll bring our top four priorities to the table in the next meeting. We'll finalize those and get those to the board at the deadline on 6/10. Any questions? Thank you very much. Come and see us, second Monday of every month.
My grandkids live in Floris. My grandkids, I guess. Jason, Golf Committee Chair. Just highlights of our meeting, the first of the month, 10th of the month, green fees are down still. Remember, green fees are down about $81,000 compared to last year. Obviously rainy, the rainy season, all the rain we got in the spring and early summers put us behind the eight ball there. Rounds were obviously down to a little over 3,000 rounds down over last year here to date. 17,000, over 70,000 total rounds in June, that's down just about 130, just slightly down from last year, so we're gaining some track. Guest revenue was up and guest rounds were up. Revenue from guests was 10-4 over last year and just over 1,000 rounds extra by some guests this year here today. Merchandise sales at the pro shops are still over, exceeding budgets. They're up 27,000. A lot of that just has to do with all of our great operational people pushing merchandise and people coming to pay the green fees. Brittany is still struggling a little bit. They're down 178 rounds from last year, so we still need to continue to push. Push the Brittany course getting played. One thing that we are doing is in August, first two weeks of August, we're going to do a kids play free, kind of back-to-school type of thing before the kids go back to school. If the adult or parent or grandparent is paying to offer, then the kids can play along with them free. We're going to do that two weeks, like I said, first of August through the 15th, because I think they go left school the 16th. So we're going to start doing some of those promotions. We did get a subcommittee signed up, Mary Reardon, Susan Nuttall, and Dean Collins, and Mary Sinkus is going to be the board liaison for that committee. And I know they're starting to get some stuff going for 2020. We had a visit again this year from Steve, and I hope I pronounce his last name correctly, Camerer. He's our USGA representative, and he gave us a great report on our courses, and they are available online. Some good information, some good reads under the Golf Committee webpage that you can pull his report up. As all of us committees, we, all the other committees, we had officer reelections and all of our officers of things, myself as chairman, Phil Spencer as vice chair, and Susan as secretary. And that's about it. Our next golf meeting is August 14th, and we will also be getting, we have a special meeting for our budget items, for our capital, and we'll have those at all times as well. So any questions concerned?
And on the meeting on the 14th, the main subject matter will be?
The main subject matter will be Burtstow Bridge, future, what we're going to do, the input, and how we're going to handle that.
Any other questions for Jason? Thank you, Jason. We appreciate it. I did not see Jim. Jim, you want to take that?
Yes, community involvement meeting that they didn't have forum. There's only two members right now. There's only two members right now. So still looking for volunteers that want to be on the community involvement meeting. Please reach out, put in a recommendation, they still need people. The Fireflies and Telgate event went fantastic. There was a great turnout. The blue burn houses were a huge hit. Thank you to my dad for that, putting that together. Next year will be wonderful. Couple of things that we talked about at the meeting, they did not do committee nominations for the elections, no committee elections. They're going to wait for a couple applicants we're voting on tonight. And for 2020 budget, there's one more meeting they're still going to have before they turn in the budget recommendations to us. The one thing that was discussed at the Fireflies and Telgate event was an idea of a monthly movie on the large screen that we had out there. I think it's worth pursuing. They're going to let us know if that is something that is feasible with volunteers. And the next meeting is on August 1st.
Here in the boardroom. Okay, and a special thank you to John and to you both for all the effort that you guys made and carried out with the Fireflies and Telgates. Much appreciated. Anything else from the committee reports? If not, financial reports, do you want?
Okay, this is the income statement, year-to-date 2019, and thousands of dollars, starting with the POA. POA is $252,000 less than what we had budgeted. Golf, as we already mentioned, and talking about the rounds down, 175,000 angels and weather-related negative. Lot valuations, we've seen this number every month, 148. This is due to the lot sold and the flash sale. Past due collections down 89. Legal was 60,000 of that. Cell tower rents 45 plus better than budget, and that's the cell tower that the NMT suffered. The prior year change is 902 positive, again, the cell tower makes the majority of that. Rebates are up to 54, Carol electric rebate. Stump dump down 83. Golf down 89, or 98, excuse me. Past due collections down 126, and lot valuations on this one is 149. Moving down to the expense section, operating expenses are down from budget, 722. salaries and wages are a plus, 184 mainly golf operations, and maintenance makes up 80% of that number. Maintenance and repairs are better by 152. Grounds and building maintenance. Equipment and tools are better by 64. Small equipment, all purchased, all across the divisions. Gym contingency, 60,000. Utilities, 44, positive across all divisions. Professional services, this is the big one, this is the stump dump number, a negative 1,383,000. Looking at prior year comparison, maintenance repairs, 169 better, related mainly to the flood that we had in 2018 as expense and none in 2019. Equipment and tools better by 123. Employee benefits, 110, health insurance claims year-to-date. Supplies better by 40, positive across the divisions. And professional services, again, the stump dump, 1383 negative. Looking at the EBITDA, the EBITDA on the POA is 974, 924,000 less than budget. We'll do the same analysis, but we're eliminating the stump dump and the one-time cell tower revenue. We would be 367,000 better than budget if we didn't have those two one-time events. So the POA is still doing very good. Looking at water, gross profit is down 188. We've seen the water all year. Water usage is down. Prior year comparison, down 174. Scrap metal, small, plus 17. And balances, water usage is down 190 compared to last year. Operating expenses better by 101. Labor is 40,000, maintenance and vacancies. Maintenance repairs better by 26, less system repairs. And employee benefits are better by 18, again, health insurance claims. Prior year comparison, 109,000 better. Equipment, small equipment purchases, 116 of that number. Employee benefits, 27,000, again, health insurance claims. And labor is 24 for vacancies and outside contracts, 68, due to the cellular pass-through cost on the new water meters that weren't in last year's numbers. EBITDA on the water department, six months running, negative 87,000 less than what we had budgeted. That concludes my report. Any questions?
Questions for John?
Going back to the operating expense, just a quick clarification, please, about the professional services, 1,400,000 for the stump dump. That was through June, and I think now the phase one is over with, so presumably another, whatever the difference is.
So we're going to cover the revised audit financials from 2018 a little bit later on in the meeting. One of the things that is incorporated into the change is that the auditors asked us to put through an accrual of 1.6 million, almost 1.7 million dollars into 2018. The reversal of that is going through in June. So actually, when you look at the expenses up here right now, you'll see the professional expenses are negative 1.4 million dollars, but that is actually plus the 1.7 from last year because the reversal went through in June. So basically, we accrued 3 million up to 4 million in expenses. Is that where we're at right now?
Yeah, we're 3.7 as of what we're going to be making Monday.
Okay.
But as of? But as of this one, we're about a million less than that. Can we pack what we have in?
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question on the operating expenses. It looks like a lot of things across a lot of departments are doing a lot better than budget. Is that due to the 1 million that was cut from the operating support? We're actually seeing a result from that?
That's what you're seeing. Now, keep in mind that, correct me if I'm wrong, about 600,000 of the total savings is capital projects cut out. But yes, you're seeing across the board where every single department is making an effort to try and cut out the million dollars. So that's why you're seeing it.
That's wonderful, the efforts.
Any other questions?
I'm going to ask you to turn to page 91 of your board packet. This was not originally on the agenda when we handed this. This is a document that was for the first time shown to the board at the work session. And you'll notice that this is for May, so we're still working through this. But this is a document we're contemplating producing every single month, every single month. We're calling it the one-pager. Our goal is to make our financials as simple as possible and to make it as digestible as possible. So you'll see, now, keep in mind, this is month-end as of May. On the left-hand side, you can see compared to budget, the departments that are doing better than budget. For example, recreation is better than budget by 163. Way down to IT, that's better than budget by 3,000. You'll also see the departments that are worse than budget. The first one being clubhouses, legal, which is mainly the sale of lots, and then also the general income. And we even put a note in there, the trepholga fire expenses. So those are the ones that are worse than budget. Then you see the total POA variance, and then the water. And then on the right-hand side, you can see how the profit is doing compared to budget, how the expenses are doing compared to budget, and then the total EBITDA. And then we've adjusted that where we've taken out the impact of the stump dump fire and also the sale of the cell tower leases, to give you an idea of where we're at. We've also included, since these are two kind of really relevant and current issues, we're including what our month-end borrowings are. So you see that as of the end of May, we had not borrowed from the water department and we had not borrowed from the line of credit. Those two are going to be changing pretty soon here, but we wanted to at least give you for the May. And then also what our cash reserves are. So we think that this is going to give you a quick snapshot. If you only wanted to spend five or 10 minutes to go through our financials, you could accomplish that by going through the one-pager. And then on the very bottom on the right hand, you'll see that if you want more detail, you have any questions that were not answered, that you can go through and you really dig deeper into the financials. So we're just trying to keep it to one page. So this is something that we're going to make available and we're going to add it to our website so our residents can read through it.
I'd like to just comment, one detail in the June report that Dwayne didn't mention was the food and beverage division, which we have the detail on. And for the first time since both facilities were open, including Branchwood, I mean, including Highlands and Metfield, the net income was in the black for the month of June. And I've got a pretty good feeling about July because of the events we've had in July. And for the naysayers who do not frequent the two finest restaurants in Bell Vista, BB Bar and Grill in Lake Point, it's starting to turn and it's starting to get better. And I'm just really optimistic about both facilities.
Any other questions? If not, as you will see, there were questions or comments from last month's open forum. At this time, we've opened a forum, and I do not have anybody on the forum. Is there anybody who would like to speak?
Hi, Susan Nuttall. Just real quick, I wanted to make a comment. This is on my role as the tournament chair for the Friends of Dogwood. We've gotten great support for our tournament, especially our Brittany tournament this year. So we've already collected enough money that we've been able to buy two sets of junior clubs that'll be available for use when we start the kids play free promotion next week.
When is your tournament, Susan?
What?
When is your tournament?
The tournament is September 2nd.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, let's move on to the audit financial statement.
At the annual meeting, we had a preliminary audit financial statement, but the auditors had not yet released them. We had to wait an unusually long amount of time, but it was mainly because of the trepholga road fire. So they finally approved them. They put through one change. It's a large change, and it's for 1,600,000 dollars. So I'm going to go through these changes for you. So as a result of the trepholga fire, you can see that our independent auditors, PKD, required us to put through an entry of 1,666,000 dollars. That is going to impact multiple areas of our financials. When you, now, on this, you'll see that it says page three and page four and so forth. That is the pages of the audited financials, not of your board packet. So if you're going through your board packet, disregard the number, where it says P and then the number. You want to look at the number on the far right-hand side. So starting with the balance sheet, you'll see that we had to put through, under current liabilities, environmental expenses of 1.6, which was then reversed, Steve, when we, in June. Also, you'll see towards the bottom of the statement of revenue and expenses, that the environmental expenses are there also at 1.6. And then the statement of functional expenses, this gives much more detail across the different divisions. And you'll see on the bottom right-hand corner, the 1.6 million dollar entry. As a result of this, it has a negative impact on our owner's equity. So you'll see the deficit of revenue over expenses. And then you'll see it impacts the statement of cash flows. And so if you look at the accrued expenses, this was not the only accrual that we had put through. There's another one of about 6,000 to 7,000 dollars, so it's not just the one entry. So you're not going to see the 1.66, you're going to see the 1.67. But that is going to put through. And then they really beefed up the notes and described it in much more detail. The previous version on, that was presented at the annual meeting. The previous version on, that was presented at the annual meeting, was very brief. It did not provide a lot of information. This provides a lot more information. It talks about the administrative order between the POA and the Arc Mo Department of Quality. So this will give you a lot more information. So the golf, I'm sorry, the audit committee met on June 27th, and they approved these minute, the final version of the audit. And we are at this time asking the board directors to vote to approve the audit financials.
Like inner game motion?
So move.
A second. Any questions or comments, discussion?
Would you mind stating a motion, please, Steve?
I move that the board approve the audited financial statements for 2018.
Now, a second. Okay, any discussion? We've discussed several times what I'm talking about, so. If not, I'll call for a vote. All those accepting?
Next on your agenda is the proposed change to the transfer fees. You can find this in your board packet on page 92. We have, when you transfer title from one individual to the next, the POA charges a 150-dollar transfer fee. It has been the same since 2015, and management is recommending to the board that we increase this to 175 dollars. So it's a 25-dollar increase. One of the items that came up in the discussion when it was originally proposed was what happens when we have a spouse pass and changing the title from being Mr. and Mrs. to just Mr. or just Miss, is there a charge? And that issue was actually addressed in September 1st of 2016, and the policy was changed at that time where we no longer charge when you have a situation where the surviving spouse is trying to be dissolved or someone of record. So we were asking, I'm sorry, we also did some market comparison, not the easiest thing to compare, but we found a range of 100 to 400 dollars, so we feel that the 175 is reasonable. We have included a suggested motion. We are asking for, if the board proceeds with this, that we make one change to the suggested motion, that instead of it going into effect on August 1st, it would go into effect on September 1st. Doug has to go through and make sure that all of the real estate companies and title companies are aware of this change. Any question?
After making that change, can I ask for a motion?
I make a motion to increase the transfer fee by 25 dollars to 175 dollars effective September 1st, 2019.
A second. Any discussion? Any questions? If not, I'll call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor?
Next on your agenda is several committee appointments. They are covered on page 94 and 95 of your board packet. For the community involvement committee, we have two individuals that have been recommended or nominated, Maria and Janet. And for the recreation committee, we have Jackie that has been recommended. We ask if the board is approving of these, we ask that we do individual motions for each nomination.
Okay, can I have a motion on the community involvement advisory committee of Maria Whitfield?
I make a motion to approve the nomination of Maria Whitfield to the community involvement joint advisory committee.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? And we've all seen the resume and everybody's checked it over and can I call for a vote at this time? All those in favor? Okay. Maria will be joining the joint advisory committee. And now we have one for Janet Conway. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the nomination of Janet Conway to the community involvement joint advisory committee.
A second, please. David, a second. Any discussion? Any questions? If not, I'll call for a vote on Janet Conway. Thank you. She will be joining the community involvement, community involvement joint advisory. And now we have a separate one for the rec committee. It's Jackie Gaines. Can I have a motion on that one?
I make a motion to approve the nomination of Jackie Gaines to the recreation joint advisory committee.
A second, please. Steve, a second. Any discussion? If not, can I call for a vote on the recreation committee and Jackie Gaines? And that brings us three new members to join two fire street committees, which we are happy to do and we appreciate their volunteer and their willingness to volunteer, so.
Next on your agenda is Roman numerals 13, which is the update regarding the Burstedale Bridge. We received a report back from Crafton-Tull and have provided that information to the golf JAC committee. Jason has put together an agenda for the meeting on August 14th at 4:00. That will be the primary topic of discussion will be the Burstedale Bridge. We're going to make the agenda and the analysis and all the estimates from the engineering firm, all of that available to the community, probably, Jason, tomorrow. So we want to put it in the hands of the community as far in advance as possible so they can digest it. And then Tammy has created a feedback email where people can send in their thoughts and comments, and it goes directly to, you know, is it Red Bridge input? So it'll be on the memo, on the agenda that goes out, but it'll be bridgeinput@bvvpoa.com. People can send in their input and their thoughts, and all that information will be shared with the golf committee. So we encourage people that want to know more about the bridge to look for that documentation when it comes out via email, and then attend the meeting on August 14th at 4:00.
If I want to find the information on the web pages, where do I look?
It'll be under the golf committee.
Golf committee section. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Should we move that from here to Weirden, do you think, and me?
It's, I'll have Tammy check to see if there is availability at Weirden. If not, we could potentially use the Mr. Room. That way, people don't go to the wrong building. That may actually be better.
Yeah, okay.
Any others questions? That's the 14th, the regular JAC meeting on Wednesday at 4:00. Okay, Tom?
Next on your agenda is an update regarding the Trafalgar site and the West Side stump dump. I'm going to start with the West Side stump dump. If you recall, the last time we spoke, we had ADQ out and we were trying to find the edges of the site. It's a 35-year-old site, so it's hard to determine exactly where the site and where the edges, the exterior is. So they did some pilot testing, pilot holes to try and find the edges. It appears that the site is six acres in size, not 10 acres, and the estimate that we provided to the board last month was for the full 10 acres. So we're hoping that ADQ will approve it. They haven't yet given us the authorization to move forward. The lead time on getting the geosynthetic clay liner is many months, so we're hoping that they will give us the okay as soon as possible so we can then get the geosynthetic clay liner ordered because of the long lead time. So we're optimistic that it will be reduced down to six acres. So that's it. And questions on the West Side?
Is there any better time to lay that liner?
Not to my knowledge, no, not at all. Our hope is that if we get the authorization, we get in our order, we get it delivered, our hope is that we can get it, get the entire capacity completed by the end of this year, maybe first quarter of next year. That's our, I would like to, a year from now, be done with the stump dump business other than ongoing testing. That was my goal. Regarding the Trafalgar site, we continue to provide updates. We did drone footage on Tuesday of this week. It is available on the website. We continue to get a lot of activity. We posted one about two weeks ago, and there were 650 views. So people still are very interested. We already have, I think, almost 200 views on the one that we posted two days ago, so there still remains a lot of interest. We have hydro seeded the site. They are installing irrigation, above-ground irrigation, so that we can make sure that what grows in stays healthy and doesn't die off. We are planning on doing drone footage towards the end of next week, which is when the grass should start coming in and we'll be able to show everybody a nice green picture of what it looks like. The plans for phase two are due to ADQ. I think it's September 8th approximately, and so we've been in communication with ERM, the company that is going to be preparing those plans, and they anticipate that they will have them in on time. So everything is going well in that regard. The above-ground irrigation, once the grass is established and everything, we'll be able to remove that above-ground irrigation. And the timing should work out nicely. We can then transport and move that stuff over to the West Side stump dump and reutilize the same equipment, the same stuff, so we can save ourselves a little bit over there. The one thing, this is somewhat related to the, well, it's related because of expense-wise, the sale of Arc Mo has been delayed by two weeks. I've been told, don't panic, the sale's going through. It's just some of the survey work is taking longer than they originally anticipated, so it's going to take two weeks. The timing of the cash is a little unfortunate. We originally had anticipated that we would not have to touch the line of credit. We're going to have to touch the line of credit for a brief amount of time, but once that, those funds come in from the sale of Arc Mo, we'll be able to pay off the line of credit right away. So a little bit change of story, because I've been telling you with a certain amount of pride that we weren't going to touch the line of credit, and then within days, we found out that this was delayed and the timing is just not great for us. So that's where we're at on the Trafalgar site. Continue to look at our website to get further updates.
Is there water over on the West Side?
We're working on that. Good point, Doug. We were possibly going to talk to the homeowner that's down the way across from the gun range. That's one of the options that we're looking at, but there's not a lot at the exact site, so we're trying to figure out where we can get it from.
Other questions? Probably ask everyone to stand on a, any progress with the other responsible parties?
We continue to work through that. There were a couple of other pleadings filed from the other parties in the last couple of days, which we continue to stay on top of, but our lawyers are talking to their lawyers, so that's about the extent of it.
Other questions? Anything else for the good of the cause? If not, rules and regulation committee meeting will meet right afterwards or shortly afterwards. The board of directors, GM meeting will meet August 8th at 4:30. So you make that change on the calendar as well as this, if you would, please. That's a change to hope to accommodate all board members. Meet and greet Saturday, August 10th at 9:30 in the Vista Room. So if you know anybody in your neighborhood or anybody that you've run into in the last, actually, four or five months, because it's been at least that long since we've had a meet and greet, please contact them and see if they would like to come. It's very informative and it's a good opportunity to meet all new people. The work session is August 15th at 9:00, and the regular board meeting is August 23 to 6. And then it shows you a couple of items from the September and the change date on September, Tuesday, September 10th, rather than Tuesday, September, and that will also be at 4:30. Anything else? If not, we stand adjourned.